Well, I would like to, good evening and welcome, and I would like to call the regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees January 10, 2019, to order. If you would stand with me, please, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First quarter of business tonight, the public comment. If there's anybody who would like to address the board on an issue or concern, you're welcome to come to the podium and do so. Okay. I want to take advantage of that this evening, then I will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will move to regular village business. First item of business is resolution to approve the minutes from December 27, 2018. These minutes as written by the clerk are part of your packet. You have an opportunity to look them over. Anybody have any question regarding them? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written by the clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Bower?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Second item here is resolution to authorize Mayor Byers to sign the supplemental agreement number two with Lew Engineers. We've had a discussion on this. Jake is here this evening if he would like, and he would be willing to entertain any questions as opposed regarding this. So I would, I have, I have asked questions, and in terms of the questions that I have, still a little bit perplexed on some of the math and engineering. I've got to do the wrong business, but at any rate, anybody have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I had, you know, we were discussing, I had some concerns as well. Jake started filling me in a little bit in the office, but, does somebody from Lew attend me tonight, or no?
Uh, no.
So it's all on Jake to explain everything?
Let me tell you.
Those supplemental agreements they had, we did an agreement with Lew Engineers to be the consultant, and then to do the design portion of the project. Once the design portion of the project was done, and we awarded the construction portion of the project, then part of the requirement is to have a construction inspection. The original estimate for the construction inspection, I think, was a hundred thousand, a thousand dollars. When they did the supplemental agreement number one, they looked at it some more and thought, you know, it's a pretty short-term project, so they did supplement, or supplemental agreement number one was actually the construction inspection portion of it, wasn't a third, you know, just because we had the original consulting agreement with them. It was for, they said seventy-eight thousand instead of a hundred thousand. As part of that project, that seventy-eight thousand has been used up, and there's additional, and it's, they did it as an up to seventy-five thousand additional. And some of the additional things are related to the additional time that it took because of the weather delays and things. There's still construction inspection that had to happen. There was concrete, concrete at the pavilion, they had to do some additional testing on. Those additional testing numbers are in there, the additional engineering, if you recall, the pavilion itself in the sign, we had to end up moving. And we did, the board entertained three different designs, or ways to, you know, we talked about flipping the sign to the other side, or changing it on an angle, or moving things because of some obstructions that were in the way down there. So there's additional design work for that, and ultimately, we ended up, basically it was the same layout as it was before, and it just got moved to the south to avoid the obstruction. There's additional survey and things like that, they're, they're, we did this Lew Engineers stuff, Atlantic Testing thing, and EDR is also in there. Who are, those are all subs of Lew Engineers, so there was additional cost. And additionally, it was about two months of order on that, so.
So instead of, so instead of it even being a hundred thousand, which they originally thought, it's going to be around a hundred and-
Fifty thousand.
Right, about a hundred and fifty. And, now, not that it's a, hey, we found it somewhere, but the construction that we originally estimated, and we originally, was what we did the contract for, was nine, nine hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars and fifty cents, actually came out to about eight hundred and forty-four. So the construction came under about a hundred and four thousand dollars on the project. So overall, we're going to be probably fifty, fifty-five thousand less on the project than we originally had estimated. I remember our portion of it, it was in seventy, seventy, excuse me, seventy-seven percent, federal aid had eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars from, in federal aid, a little over eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And with seventy-seven percent federal aid, twenty-three percent for the village, which left us, if I recall, was about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Of that two twenty-five, I think we put fifty thousand dollars in. There, we need the board, put fifty thousand dollars in their reserve, I think a year before, we're going to do it to start the North Avenue Connector project reserve. And the other hundred and seventy-five that made up that portion was through the incentive zoning for the North Avenue apartments. So the true outlay to Village Daxbears, really for everything that was done there, and the total project cost was pretty minimal, so.
So we're still over by roughly forty-five thousand?
What's that?
They're still over by roughly forty-five thousand.
The, the engineers, or the whole project?
The project.
No, the whole project is on there, probably, because-
I'm sorry, the engineering?
Yeah, the engineering would be, but there was additional, there was additional work that had to be done because of some things that came up.
So, and even, and again, the, the copy of the, well, I haven't seen a copy of the totally signed agreement. We were given one that you signed, but there's not one that Lew Engineers and the village signed. And in there, where it talks about the lump sum fixed fee, that's really a percentage? Did that show up in the final agreement as a percentage? Because they're charging eleven percent as a fee.
Yes, there's eleven, that was in the original-
Well, I never saw that.
Okay.
The one that was given to the, to the board when this one came in, it's signed by you, and that, on that page five, it's left blank. And even on this one, it's still left blank, on page five.
The negotiated lump sum fixed fee?
Yeah. And I just question, how can a lump sum fixed fee be a percentage? Because that's not a fixed fee. Somebody was supposed to fill in a blank there with a dollar amount. And instead, they charge, they're charging eleven percent of the labor, I think it is.
Actually, it's eleven percent on top of labor and overhead, they include both together. Labor, eight hundred and sixteen percent of that-
But that's, that's not what the original contract says, unless somebody wrote that in there at some point.
I think those are spelled out on a different base than that-
I've never seen it in any page. If you can point out the page where it says that, Jake, I'd love to read it.
What, like, did you say you'd buy me lunch?
I'll buy you dinner.
Awesome. I will find it tomorrow morning for agent tonight.
No, it says, it says, it says it in some extraneous, like, letters that, that Lew wrote after the fact, but it, but I can't find it in the actual contract itself. Because that's the box where it should have been put in, was page five.
And then item six says the maximum amount payable, including fixed fees, unless it's formally amended or supplemented, is seventy-five.
Well, technically-
That included-
Right. Well, so I suppose the argument is, well, now you're supplementing.
So here's-
So here's another seventy-four thousand dollars. You know, the original agreement does say, you know, they, they can charge for what their actual costs were. So the argument is as well, our actual costs went way over what our estimates were. But-
I don't know, when I was in engineering, the bid was the bid, the accepted bid was emailed, and if they went over, our department had to agree to it, or the board has to agree with the overage in order to pay them, correct? That's what we're doing.
A payment, we never did come back with the accepted fee.
Yeah, we took it, we took it. We should have gone about that quite some time. And they went over. They were going, right, they should have known that. And so then, there would have to be an agreement, and the overage.
Right. This is all done at the end of the check.
This is done after it's done. And, you know, in previous engagements that I had, if you went over, that wasn't our problem, was there?
And I know Jake's statement, he had continually asked him for, right, and played the board until he, that Jake is not providing to-
Yeah, Chris-
Until here we are at this point.
Yes, Chris was letting me know, we were getting close on the, on the payments that we're making for the construction inspection portion of it. I said, Eric, you know, we submit another bill, I said, we need to get, you know, a supplemental agreement. And then there was some point of it, a delay in getting that supplemental agreement, two months. You know, it's, it just got here, and it was last week, so.
I don't think so, all the final thoughts, did you?
Well, it's one of the things that, when I talked to Scott before I went on vacation, that Scott from Lew Engineers, just one of the things he said, he's, you know, he agreed that he was wrong, he should have got the agreement to a spaster, but one of the other things, when you see the light at the end of the tunnel, he wanted to make sure that the final agreement would be inclusive of everything. That's why he said he would have a spaster a little higher than what he thinks it will actually be, because he wanted to make sure not to have to do another agreement at the end. So I think he saw the light at the end of the tunnel, figured, all right, now he's going to know what all the costs are, now he can do one, one agreement there.
Did the initial agreement say that, at the end, that it was just regarding a ten percent over, you know, this disagreement is, you know, that's a default?
Yeah, I always thought, seeing that, when the consulting agreement at the beginning of the project, they questioned it at that time. I mean, I don't know if I questioned it with the board, but the question I remember when it was by Logan, and this work for Lew Engineers at that time, and asking them, trying to figure out what's, you know, how these fees figure, if they were on top of it, or how exactly they work, because frankly, it was kind of foreign to me, it's like, here's your, here's your hourly rate, or here's what your fees are. I think it's an effort to cap prices, saying, hey, here's, because you're reading the initial agreement, I think it was, the consultant agreement, they could say that, you know, they're described as a maximum allowable fee, a fixed fee or overhead fee, and I think it's an effort to cap, you know, from the federal projects, to keep control of things. It seems odd way to do things to me, but I think it's, that's the way that these projects go, I guess. And I don't know if I told you before, you know, this is my first experience, since I've been at the village for the federal, federal project as well, so it's, it's definitely quite a different animal than, you know, a state, you know, a state project, or a community development grant, or whether you work with the county, or some of the other grants or projects that are, other funding sources.
Well, there'll always be extra costs, unforeseen things that turn up. It's why it should be included in the, the bid of acceptable to be ten to fifty percent over the original bidding cost.
Well, it's, this isn't, it's not a contingency cost in that manner. This is, you know, the engineer, if one of their employees, their labor cost is thirty dollars an hour, he works thirty hours, what they end up billing us is the three hundred dollars for the labor cost, and then three hundred and forty-eight dollars for overhead, on top of that, so you're up to six hundred and forty-eight. And then I think there's another eleven percent of the fee, the fixed fee that's on top of the overhead, when you calculate those two together. So if they end up, they'd end up billing us closer to, I think, seven hundred something. And I think what that represents is, hey, they have their labor cost, they have their other costs associated with the hourly rate for the labor, and they have their profit, which is presumably why everybody works, is to, you know, they have a business to, they have to eat as well. So I think that's what, the way that, they do it that way, so that there's a, you know, yeah, you can, you can eat on this, you can make money on this, you can stay in business, and capitalism is alive, but you can't make it all, you know, you can't make fifty percent. You can, so they kind of have to be, there's a lot of transparency in these projects, I think, where they have to show what their true costs are, and here's how much you can make out of it. And that's, that's limited, but it's a foreign way to do it to me. It seems kind of odd, but, but I can certainly-
Although, they never disclose what their overhead is.
No, they, their overhead is just, they disclose what their hourly rate is, and then they calculate all their overhead based on-
Yeah, they take a hundred and sixteen percent, so they double it plus some, and they claim that's their overhead for their offices, and turn their lights on, and everything else. To me, that's-
I don't know. I think that it's, is that, would that be included in the eleven percent you're talking about?
Well, no, to me, that should be included in, just quote us a lump sum for what your engineering services are, and we'll decide if we want to pay that or not. You know, forget all this other stuff.
Oh, I, I disagree at all.
But, you know, because you're paying whatever their actual labor cost is, they pay this guy thirty bucks an hour or something, and on top of that, you're paying him another hundred and sixteen percent. And then, even though the contract doesn't call for it, because Jake still can't find where it says eleven percent, they charge eleven percent, where it's supposed to be a lump sum fixed fee. So I-
Do you want to table this?
I have a question on Article 12. You had a question on that. Is this anything that refers to delays? Says the consultant agrees that no charges or claim shall be made, or, no charges, and then we have a separate, or claim for damages, but charges shall be made by, according to delays or hindrances from any cause whatsoever during the progress of any portion of the services specified in this agreement. So when they poured incorrectly, or whatever, they did, and it took time to do that, is that part of this? Or, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know if that has anything to do with, you know, delays that were, or charges that were caused by services specified in the agreement? I don't know. I just question.
Yeah.
Where does it say that we're responsible for their overcost, overruns?
Well, we could do it. It could be done here. Such delays, if any, shall be compensated for by an extension of time for such a reasonable period, as the municipality may decide. It being understood, however, that the permitting to proceed to complete any services or any part of them after the date of completion, or after the date to which the time of completion may have been extended. So I don't know. Whether that has anything to do with it. That was a question that was brought up, about delay, certainly not damage, but of the delay. I understand the delay was not based on the consultant, it was based on the, maybe that's more appropriate, paper where we should have drawn, on the contract.
Well, there, I think there was a mixed bag of things. It was a relatively short-term project reality, you know, to start with, but there's certainly weather delays that came into play. There was, like I said, the concrete on the pavilion, the additional testing that had to be done on that. And, you know, a lot of those, a lot of those items, you know, all added up, like, they moved into the, and it's not just a time, a lot of the bills, I think you have that, I don't know if that bill is here, but a lot of the bills that went with it, or with that estimate that he had, and also included, you know, EDR and Atlantic Testing, of that nature, so. I mean, I can ask Scott to clarify this some more. I notice that Article 12 brings us back to Article seven as well, and it talks about consultants, and the opinion that any work that consultant is directed to perform is beyond the scope of the project agreement and constitutes extra work. The consultant shall promptly notify the municipality in writing at this fact prior to the beginning of any work. The municipality shall be to judge as to whether or not such work is in fact beyond the scope of this agreement and constitutes extra work there. In the event the municipality determines that such work does constitute extra work, the municipality shall provide extra compensation to the consultant in a fair and equitable manner. If necessary, an amendment to the project agreement providing the compensation describing the work authority shall be prepared and issued by the municipality. In this, in this event, the supplemental agreement providing the compensation and describing the work authority shall be issued by the municipality through the consultant for execution after the approvals have been obtained from the necessary municipal officials, if so, if required from the Federal Highway Administration. We didn't change the scope much, just, you know, extended it out, and some of the things were, like I said, they didn't plan on the additional stuff. I can, you know, get with Scott and see if he can, you know, even if federal law wants to email me any, you know, if there's any specific questions or anything like that, or concerns, I can email it to him and have him answer me for the next board meeting, and we can give that, want to do that. Because I, you know, I, without having the original one in front of me and that, I've not, use much better words than how these projects go than I am, where I could ask that, or talk to TragX from our New York State, the DOT, local project liaison there.
And Don, will you correct me if I'm right, but wrong, but it's, it's still tabled, so I don't think you have to reform it. You could, you could lift it from the table next time.
If there's tape lines, why is there, I'd have to look at their press agreement, see, I don't know if there's, is there interest that they could charge on these? Okay.
There's nothing in the agreement that says anything about interest.
And how long do we have before we sign and pay them?
You know, some of these, you know-
I'd like to know very quickly, they should be paid for, for things that they did.
Yeah.
And the fact is, just that we have a question on the itemization of those things, you know.
Yeah, the way that the, the, their cost plus the overhead plus the fixed fees, that hasn't, my observation, that hasn't changed since the first consulting agreement that we had. I don't have it, you know, I don't have that with me.
No, that's true, except, again, the first one, there was a blank space for the fixed fee.
Yeah, there was-
And somehow, they turned into eleven percent.
Well, I recall, one of the amendments, or the appendices in the back, they had a spreadsheet, they had those fees, I think, spelled out in there, and maybe it was something that they should have filled out on that other page.
Well, the spreadsheets were all, again, after the fact kind of things. They, they, those wouldn't have existed before the, they started their work.
No, they did, they, they did, they spelled out, you know, it was in project estimate when they had the hours, and then they had those fees that were in there. I mean, like I said, I can certainly, I'm not going to be able to, without having any of those things here, answer with certainty, so I can-
Jake, there was a, a page here of numbers, starting back in 2015, 16, and 17, labor and overhead adjustment for the North Avenue Quarter Connector project. And at the top, it talks about a hundred and fifty percent overhead, and I don't understand what these numbers are, so I don't know why they came as part of the packet that we received, which also included then the original cost, the adjusted cost, that was part of the, you know, original seventy-eight thousand. So I don't know what this is, and I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it again to- It coincides with their first bullet point on their December 19 letter, that says the design phase went over budget by three thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Please note there was a labor and overhead adjustment of fifteen thousand six eighty-five, see attached calculation. And then you get to the, this spreadsheet, this table that Darrell was referencing, which is indecipherable, I, I don't understand what it means, but then their bottom line is a negative fifteen thousand six eighty-five forty-one, that same number, except now it's a negative. And it says in parentheses, cost to get whole with labor and OH, what I assume is overage. But what does that mean? Like, what did they do with that fifteen thousand six eighty-five? Was that somehow a credit to the village? Or is the village paid, somewhere paid an extra fifteen thousand six eighty-five forty-
No, no, seeing that, looking at the dates, these were the design services, the design and, you know, preliminary design and final design, and when they actually downed to 1031 Street before they bid, before it went out to bid. So these numbers, I think, represent the, their costs associated with the design phase, and they actually went over fifteen thousand and didn't get that from, back from the village. They didn't seek an adjustment in that at that time. So I think that that's what this, I think that's what he's pointing out in that one. I don't think he's showing it back in now, he's just saying, hey, keep in mind, we wrote off fifteen grand from the design because we had a lot of meetings with the design-
No, he's not writing it off, but he's collecting it, because I guess he's saying that, if you look above it, their total cost to get whole was eighteen thousand eight oh six. They're looking to get paid three thousand one hundred and twenty, he rounded it up to three thousand one twenty-one is what they're seeking now in their supplemental agreement too. So they're, they're not eating anything. It seems to me they're charging the village, you know, everything, no matter what the delays were caused by, no matter who was responsible for pouring wrong concrete or anything, they're passing all of their additional time onto the village. So I guess the question the board has is under that Article 12, where they're supposed to be responsible, and not the village, for any charges, for any delays or hindrances from, quote, "any cause whatsoever." Yet they're seem to be passing it all onto the village. So I guess the question that you should ask them is, well, for like example, overtime, what caused them to incur two thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars worth of overtime? Was it because of some delay, or what was the reason? The same thing, was, why did you spend so many extra hours in inspections? What was the reason for that?
I agree with that. And I think, and I understand what you're saying.
And I think what, the problem is, is what should have happened under that other section that you were, you read, Jake, was, and again, I guess they could argue that all of this was within the scope of services, and it was nothing extra, but still, they never went to this board, maybe they went to you, but, you know, this is all, after everything's all done, you know, and they didn't go and say, look, we're, it's looking like we're going to have to incur another hundred hours of inspection, is that okay? They just, they just did it, and are expecting to just get paid for it all.
And we should have, it should have-
Whereas it may have been, it might have been okay if it was like approved, approved along the way, you know, if they came in and said, look, this is what's going wrong, this is, we need da-da-da-da, and, you know.
And normally, wouldn't they submit, I mean, if we're going back to years prior, and they haven't submitted any, any bills to us to be paid out of that original amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars?
Oh, they did, they, they, we paid bills out of that, and that's-
So we did, so those are slowly being taken out.
Yeah, that's why we're, why we're coming to this, because I was talking to Chris, we're getting closer, we exceeded that seventy-eight thousand dollar mark that we originally had in the supplemental agreement, so I requested, it was, I believe it was the end of July, beginning of August, maybe the end of August, requesting the additional supplemental agreement. You know, or, requested a supplemental agreement, because, you know, we got to the end of the construction inspection, so I said, hey, give us a, you know, you submitted another bill, we need another agreement now, so that we have, she's paying under an agreement, you know, once we have that agreement placed, then she'd do a PO for that amount, and then we're going to have that, those funds billed, you know, they're all paid.
So she asked, and then August, they give it to you instead?
They, yes.
So, and the other thing to ask him, so, you know, you have this little summary, right, Jake?
I've got that.
Yeah, so again, the top one, they have $3,121. So I gotta ask him, is that the same $3,120.63 that they've got marked paid? It seems like it could be a real coincidence that the two numbers are equal, are coinciding. And, and, and if that's what the, the extra that they're looking to get paid now, well, why are they charging 150% overhead in their calculations when the contract is 116%? I guess there's one column for overhead and they got in parentheses 150%. But the contract specifies 116%.
But that's the construction contract, I'll double check and see, you know, a couple of years ago with the, with the design contract.
Well, okay. Their overhead changes, depending on whether they're doing design work or construction services, I don't get that.
You know, construction seems, takes place outside, they're going to have to pay for the building and the heat and the dust and stuff, but the guys outside are doing the construction inspection, so maybe that's.
And what is their overhead for construction inspection?
I, we, this is the third contract that we're looking at for this. I reviewed it along with six other people. Everybody had zero problems with the other two. I, I don't have them all memorized, so like I said, I'll go back, there's specific questions, I'll go back to them, ask them, try to get clarification. I don't think they're terrible questions. I, I just didn't know which ones to ask them because they didn't come up with the previous, you know, the consulting agreements for the, for the design and, or the first construction inspection contract, and they were nearly, I think, identical contracts with, you know, one didn't do different, one of them said 78,000, this one said 75. So eight change or five, I think everything else, and maybe the dates change, I think everything else is exactly the same. So that's, I just, I will ask them why the extra and about that 3121 going from 3120.63, and then see if that was already paid, if that's a mistake on there. And, and then go from there and see if you can clarify and explain, and frankly, explain the whole process, because I'm kind of lacking in the ability to be able to explain the whole, I don't understand, and understand honestly why the engineers make more than anybody else on the whole project. It doesn't seem, I think the guy that's out there sweating, putting the concrete ought to make a pretty good chunk of change too. The engineers seem to do better than anybody, but they have, certainly have a lot of work to do, a lot of liability, and probably a lot of, of cost, overhead, insurances. I'm sure there's a lot of things that I'm not contemplating when I'm looking at what they're doing. So that's, I could ask them for clarifications because they're, you know, obviously the experts in that, and they deal with federally projects every day, and multiple ones at the same time, so I think they'd be best suited to answer any of these, these questions, so.
That's right.
All right.
Yeah, that's right. And so we'll leave it on the table until next meeting. And whether they want to come in and discuss it, or whether they have provided you adequate information to pass on to us, that's.
Yeah, as soon as I get it for my, forward it on so that there's time to ask, I'm sure there'll be follow-up questions, you know, so I'll forward them on to everybody and see if they're sloppy, we'll keep that dialogue going, so hopefully they'll all be answered by the next meeting.
Remember, I tried to hold them up from being paid, I'm just curious and want to know the details of the requests.
Hey, I live in the village, I'm very appreciative that everybody's watching this. I pay the taxes too, so.
Oh, the other.
That's awesome, that's what you're, that's why we're here, you know.
Is the extra, the 74,000, whatever it is, is that subject to the grant too?
Yes.
So 70 odd percent of it, or whatever the percentage is, is getting paid by the federal government anyhow?
Yeah, up to the, to the maximum, that 811,580 is what's been released for this project, so all the costs, and like I said, the 844,000 is what the construction aspect of it was. That's covering the other design things and stuff like that, so we had that 200, I know that 175 and the 50, it was portioned, you recall with the, there was additional, you know, at the very beginning of it, you know, a little more, so it should all be, I don't recall if there was 150,000 deposited into that reserve fund, or if there was one in each year, two years, so that might have already been in there and allocated towards this as well, so, but Chris isn't here to follow up.
All right, so we will do a look at one, and we'll come back to that. Put that on the agenda, please, for the next meeting. All right, so, I believe then we must take a look at the, ask Heather, is payment of this part of the claims and warrants?
Um, yes. So it'll be taken out of that, right Jake?
Yeah, it would, yeah, certainly.
Yeah, so we'll wait on that again. It definitely was in there for the last one, and she may just carry it over, I'm not sure, but.
I didn't, I didn't see what I looked at last time.
She may have just not put it in there in case, I'm not sure, I'll find out, but we're not paying it anyway, so.
It's not on these funds anyway, because it'd be out of the reserve fund.
Out of the capital reserve fund, right. So she, she always had a separate.
But we also just put, this is AccuFunds reporting now, so it might have just been oversight, so I apologize, I'll look into that. So the new report will be split up by General, Sewer, and Trust and Agency, unless there's, if there's capital, it'll be capital, but they might just not have realized there was, since it was from last time.
Nice working report. This is from the new software?
It's going well, yes. This is the new, we learned cash receipts today, and it's going really well. There's only, so there's four Harris programs, four or five, and there's only one AccuFunds program, so it's nice.
Well, I had an opportunity to look through, I didn't have any questions regarding what it is that I looked at in terms of claims and warrants. Played a look at it. Now it's part of the packet, if you have any questions, I can bring them up.
That workers' town looks a little high.
So, yes, if you can, if you look on page.
Three.
Page three. The 5,412.09, and then there's also a portion of it on the sewer fund as well. $1,493.26, that's part of the, that's what that would be in the sewer line. We were audited, not us, but the New York State Insurance Fund, and it was determined that we need to pay more, so.
Of course.
Everyone's determined.
I would be determined. You've got to pay more.
They just, I'm not sure, it wasn't something we were doing wrong, it was something New York State Insurance Fund did wrong, so it was in the amount of $6,823.8, and it'll be paid in three installments.
Any other, any other questions?
No, okay.
Can I let him came a motion to approve and pay the claims and warrants?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
The item four, look at modifications and transfers. We have one this evening, and I'll read that. This is from Fund AA1460.40, Records Management, $2,104.97. And from AA.1325.404, Auditor, $1,895.3. And these are going to Fund AA.1620.470, Buildings Other, for $4,000 total. And this is to allow purchase of 100 chairs for the meeting room, as well as microphones to be used during village board meetings. These funds, for these expenses, have already been received from hall rental fees, based on the recent signing of Weight Watchers, for the meeting room use for every Saturday well into mid-2019, as well as continued bookings that will be made by iCircle. So my concern was that we were not taking funds that we had already at the beginning of the year and last year looked at, and already designated, but these are funds that have come from the Weight Watchers, which is a new, I guess you could say, agreement with them to use this room, so they, from the monies that we are getting from them, we're able to purchase these chairs, which will be much more comfortable for those attending the meeting. And also will be used because we're looking at possibly holding additional conferences or other opportunities to have groups come in, and maybe this also will, Jake, alleviate Veterans Day where we, for the dinner, go across and bring all those chairs over, and maybe we'll have comfortable chairs of 104, maybe veterans and all that.
We had everybody, we had everyone sit in them. You sat in them.
Yes, yes.
Jake sat on it, with Will on his lap. They were good.
That was comfortable?
That's good. Is it indicating Weight Watchers?
We tested the weight of the chair, just in case.
So can I have a motion to approve this, this fund transfer budget modification?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Something we've talked about for a couple of years, and the funds are available, how to do that. Again, item four, a resolution to set public hearing on Local Law Number One of 2019, amending and adding certain sections to the zoning code to establish certain general and specific requirements for wireless communication facilities. To be enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, as follows. Section one, terms and provisions and conditions of section seven, 175 dash 42A8 of the Code of the Village of Webster are hereby going to be repealed in their entirety. And section two, I don't think I'm going to go through all that, I have the wrong page. Section two, chapter 175 of the Code of the Village of Webster shall be amended by add in following terms, definitions to section 175 dash three, and goes on from there. Everybody will have an opportunity to take a look at that prior to the hearing. I guess what we're doing right now is establishing and approving this public hearing. So, resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to set a public hearing regarding the adoption of the Local Law Number One, 2019, at a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, New York, held at the Community Meeting Hall, 29, Avenue, 29 South Avenue, the Village of Webster, New York, on the 10th day of January 2019. The following resolution is being offered for adoption. Whereas pursuant to New York Village Law Section 7 dash 700, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster is empowered to adopt both the laws that regulate the location of use of building structures and land for trade, industry, residence, or other purposes. And whereas this, for it had been presented with and has introduced a draft local law titled, General and Specific Requirements for Wireless Communication Facilities, and whereas the adoption of said local law is subject to a public hearing, now therefore being resolved, that pursuant to section 7 dash 706, one of the Village Law of the State of New York, a public hearing on said proposed local law number one of 2019 shall be held on the 14th day of February 2019 at 7:15 PM at the Community Meeting Hall, 29 South Avenue, Webster, New York. That notice of the time and place of such hearing describing in general terms, the proposed local law shall be published once on or before the 4th day of February 2019, in the Webster Herald, the official papers of the Village of Webster, and a newspaper of general circulation in said Village of Webster. Resolution duly put to a vote resulting in, well, first of all, I would ask for a motion to put this resolution to a vote.
Make that motion?
I'll second that.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
So on February 14th, Valentine's Day, by the way, in our first regular board meeting in February, we will be holding a public hearing regarding this new local law. We would like to adopt, getting ahead of the curve, as this is going to become more and more an issue here in the village. And I believe on Thursday night, there is an amendment to zoning board and application for variance.
Yeah, they want to be named, what is it, Nikes Columbus? Nikes Columbus, 37 and a half feet, foot power. And includes, we can have that, this is quick. What I urge the zoning board to take a look at these items that they were presenting, and be aware of, of the laws considering that are being adopted. And I sent a, the zoning board numbers to come and visit with us tonight, but I thought it was a little bit too late for me to, so I did send it, one person replied, so they should be aware of it before they make a decision.
I know that Bill Baker went with me to the latest conference that I'll take in, where there was an hour-long presentation on the new regulations for this one, so one of us.
Yeah, so both cases?
Well, one of them. But they all need to be aware of it. Although, although they, actually the law itself, if they're coming for a special use permit, it will be holding to the Village Trustees to be aware of all of this, it's important to be in here because special use permits will come for the Board of Trustees, whether the building can go anywhere. I think one of those, as we talked about it last time, because there is a time clock that begins when the application is made, and it could exceed the time between some of these meetings that are held, and they're only held once a month, depending upon when they're, when they're put in. So if we meet twice a month, we have the ability, I think, to more often meet with the Board of that shot longer.
I think just to clarify, those special use permits only as they pertain to wireless communication facilities. And yet the rest of them will still follow.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the ways I know.
That is, that is, the rest, what do you mean, the rest of them?
Any other special use permits, I think that, yeah, that's all been followed in normal zoning board or whatever.
That change is only in the new local law that is proposed, which only applies to wireless communication facilities. I can tell you, if you haven't looked at the application, and it's Verizon as the applicant for the monopole behind the Nikes Columbus. They're represented by an attorney at Nixon P. Bond, and he submitted a very thorough application, in fact, he submitted probably more than he had to, and he submitted everything that the new law would require, so. And in fact, if the new law. So, and in fact, if the new law was in effect for that application, it wouldn't even have to come before any board. It would simply be internal review by the code enforcement officer, and he could issue the permit. I know that one of them that will, he looked at the items that the new law would encompass, and there were nine out of the fifteen or sixteen that they did not comply with. I think that was an earlier application. So if they have, if they're, you know, if they are compliant in, in all that we're looking at, that was, that's good. On their eyes and crossing their jaws.
You know, they are, and the location is probably the most appropriate location. It's in the back by the dumpster, and there's trees behind it and the apartments that are just to the west. You won't even see it from Bear Drive, you won't even see it. So, but relative this, so Heather, you know, I, I put the fourth day of February for the publication only because that's ten days before the fourteenth. But you gotta make sure it's in the, you know, the Webster House on Thursday, so it's gotta be no later than the one that comes out on Thursday first of January.
Okay.
And Jake might want to remind Will or Heather, I don't know who's responsible, you gotta put the town of Webster on notice because, because it could affect, it affects zoning districts, and since it's every zoning district, it affects within five hundred feet of the town line. So you gotta put the town on notice, and also we have to put county planning on notice. So if Will does that now, or whatever's supposed to do it, because technically you can't adapt the law until you heard from county planning, or at least you gotta give them at least thirty days.
Will and I discussed it yesterday too, but I'll remind them that you said so. And it's also the town of Penfield, right, because we have the town of Penfield and its other borders.
Right. No, the Monroe County plan is because they didn't put them on state level, correct?
Well, it's just, it's the type of application. Any amendments to your zoning code are supposed to go to county, no matter what they are. It's under two thirty-nine M R N of the general municipal law. But you gotta give them, he needs to get it out to them right away because if you don't hear back from them within thirty days, then it's deemed they have no power. But if the thirty days hasn't run, you gotta, you're supposed to wait till the thirty days is up before you add them. And since today is the tenth, I don't know what the fourteenth of January is, what day that is.
I think we're more gonna see it around, you know, one day. No, he's talking about making that notification to the county, so that should be tomorrow, probably or the next day. Will's also has to do the secret stuff on it as well.
Yeah, secret, he just has to get, you know, he's gotta prepare the short form and just get it to this board by the fourteenth of February. So the county one is, and all you really need to do then, I guess, probably just send them a copy of the proposal of the law saying, he's got some kind of form that uses this set it out.
Yeah, I think so.
The fourteenth is the fourth. Fourth is a Monday. So if we have it in last week of January, we can, that is, that is no time limit prior to, correct? Like you could have it in, in January twenty-fifth or something?
So I could put it in next week.
Yeah, it's just gotta be no, no later than.
Notice. And this now is sitting on, oh, that's right.
Even though, I thought you said when you email it to them, technically?
Technically, that was when it was, yeah.
Okay.
When I emailed the two of them, it was time to check.
But you still have time now, so, okay.
All right.
I listened to you, Don. I listened to you.
Okay, moving on. Don, do you have anything more for us? Heather, you can come to clerk's office.
Yes, so last time we mentioned that, well, actually, the first part, Chris and I and also Mayor Byers will be attending government accounting. I'll be going to accounting one-on-one so I can take over as the deputy treasurer at some point. And Chris will be going to the advanced one, and Daryl's gonna go to the one-on-one with me. So just wanted to let you know, it's only eighty dollars per person, so we don't need permission, but I just wanted to let you know. And then last time we mentioned, we really would like to have Adam help us out a little bit more with our social media, and Jerry had said that he would advocate to make it a little bit more worthwhile for Adam to get, to come here and maybe come during the day sometime to help us with Facebook. He already has, and he just has a, kind of a long distance to go, so we're hoping he might consider increasing what he makes, because he'll be doing a lot more for us. Fixing and helping us with what the speakers need, the microphones, and so we can wait for Jerry. I just wanted to put it in your minds.
I noticed that, is it a boost that was taken place? Did you?
Oh, yeah.
Or Adam, I don't know, maybe it was your suggestion, but boosting our Facebook page, which.
Yeah.
boosts us out there a little bit more.
It gets you more attention, especially if there's a certain topic or post that you're posting about that you would want to get more attention about. A good example would be your recent upcoming news you have to talk about for this public hearing. You could make a boost on the public hearing post, so that way it reaches a geographical region that spreads the entire village into the town of Webster, Penfield area, and that way, whether or not they're following your page or not, they'll see the post, where if they're not following the page already, they won't see the post. And then from doing that, you gain more followers. An example that Heather mentioned earlier before we started the meeting was that from the boost she did, she gained sixty new followers to your page, which is a good and impressive thing to get from one boost, honestly.
It's not done, it was only three days, so I have a couple of days left. And we were thinking, you know, if there is some kind of emergency or something like that, we can reach more people if we get more followers. We don't, we're not so as concerned about likes as we are getting more followers. And so we increased the post, and Adam's just more experienced than I am. I did do that myself, though, figured it out.
That we talked about the last time, and then I hear for emergency preparedness and situations like that, we talked about our ability to communicate.
Right. So we'd like to bring Adam on a little bit more to help us out.
That's good. Moving closer. Jake?
Sorry, I'm working on making Mumford great again right now.
June and I are gonna come visit you out there, actually.
Huh?
June and I are gonna come.
Please do.
Take a ride out.
I have so many antiques in my bottom floor to get rid of, please do.
Really?
Yeah, the old general store, eighteen thirties building I purchased where I'm living on the top, the bottom is a full commercial zoned antique store from the nineties that they let just go. And so I purchased the property with the belongings.
Wow, American Pickers.
Big time.
I'll be up there. Jake, there was a great response that you made as far as the emergency preparedness goes.
Oh, yes, thank you, Jake.
I appreciate it.
I'll be putting that on for our next workshop, because I know you mentioned you wanted it to just be kind of the only topic we discuss for the music performance. And then the last thing, I just kind of thought about, Megan and I were talking for passport night, right now we close at six-thirty, we put passports, we stop at six. But I have this meeting, so it's a little bit hard for me if something comes up or if I need to come up here and help Adam or whatever, I would like to close the office at six. Like, it's not gonna make any difference for passports, we're still gonna take passports up until six anyway. But we, the only time we never had anyone come in is Mr. Walter and Peter Elder after six, and that was like very rare, so it's just kind of, I would like to lock the doors. Plus, it's only Megan and I sometimes until Daryl comes, and we're just kind of, you know, we have things to do, but it'd be easier if I could leave.
Now Megan would, Megan would, or whoever is staying late would stay until six-thirty. The hour would not change, you would be then working.
No, she'd go, we'd send her home at six.
Well, then how are you doing all of the other passport, paper work, all those kinds of things?
She won't leave until she's done, but sometimes we don't even have that many passports. So the nights we do, we'll stay until six-thirteen if we have to, but at least we can lock the door. That's the hard part, is that if anyone comes in, I can't run up here to let Adam in, I can't, it's, it's very difficult for me, especially when, this is, the meetings are my, one of my most important jobs, and if I have a meeting starting at seven and I have to stay downstairs until six-thirty, it's nerve-wracking, and we don't get anyone coming in, so we just wanna lock the doors at six.
Well, tonight Megan wasn't back at the, as roughly as that, she'd be truly in the passport work after six o'clock, right? What I'm saying is, if you close the door at six, in terms of office hours that closes at six, but in terms of her hours and responsibility, it might still go to six-thirty to cover and, you know, do those kinds of.
She flexes her time, though, on Thursdays, so she comes in later, and if, and we kept her, it just, and the thing is, we don't, the passport stuff can be done in the morning, it doesn't have to be done. It's not gonna change whether she does it after six or in the morning when she comes in. And it's, it's not, it's not the issue of her leaving, that's fine, she's fine with staying if she gets a meeting or something or if we're going until six-thirteen, it's just simply that we can lock the doors. So if I have to run up here, I can. And usually you come in around six, but, you know, it's, it's just, so yeah, you're there, and it's okay, but if you don't, you know, I'm there by myself, and it's like, I'd just rather close the doors so that I can take care of what I need to take care of, especially this meeting. I'm running up here at, you know, six-fifty, and it's not, that makes me very, like, you know, I'm not ready, I'm not prepared for what I need to do, that would just be not helpful, that's all.
You've got something to reconsider. Change of that.
Yeah, the passport, we still stay the same, but we still, we still say it's just our office hours can change, only on Thursdays, it's the same versus six-thirty. Yeah. So I, I just wanted, put it in your minds. Yeah, thank you.
If, if part of the organizational meeting was to set the office hours on those Thursdays at six-thirty, we should probably do a resolution if we're gonna change it to six.
Okay, right, oh, yeah, no, I know, I'm not just gonna change it, I'm gonna put it on the next meeting.
I tried to change the website, if you don't want to just.
Oh, well, good.
If they're not prepared, if they're not prepared to do it tonight, then thank you.
No, I'd like to, I'd like to, but he's not.
I've heard of the pressure that. Ruth not here, Ruth not here, I'd like to look.
I have also talked to them about it too, so we can put it on the next meeting, I just wanted to put it, put it out there. Thank you.
Jake?
Leaves are done.
Are leaves done?
Leaves are done. They, we, you know, we finished really in the middle of December, but we were working with school and some of their leaves, and they were working with us with their tractor pulling their piles out, and they were really heavy there before we finished, so we still had equipment hooked up, because we saw people putting more leaves out, we kept doing runs around trying to clean up as much as we could. In fact, and they did a final cleanup last, last week in the village, and just did a final election bonus round to get things up.
We had a number of people call in, very thankful, appreciative of the fact that we did that.
Yes, we did.
Certainly was a challenging year for leaves, but we worked out, worked out good at the end, I guess. But we, we did pick up dry leaves one day, so that was fun. The only other thing I have to, you know, in terms of D P W. is obviously we're winter times upon us, and remind everybody, we do follow the sensible salting model, or we salted the intersections of hills and curves on straightaways typically are not salted. I say typically, when we had sleet, freezing rain earlier, earlier in the week, we salted the entire, you know, entire stretch of street, we do it heavier at intersections and it'd still get that, because that was basically all black ice. But one of the, the mottos or the terms for the sensible salting is a sensible salting requires sensible driving. So remind everybody, there's snow, slow down. You know, we try to limit the amount of salt we use and put back in the environment, but, you know, that, that requires people with drive, sensible for the conditions that are out there as well, so. And just a reminder too, with plow season and stuff, it's extra important to have your vehicles off the road, you know, two to six A M., it's, there's no parking allowed on the village streets at that time, and especially this time of year for salting, to keep the salt trucks high.
If, if there is a vehicle that is on the road in the village when trucks are out at four, five, do they call?
We typically don't, nine times out of ten, it's something that we can work around. It's really a detriment to the person that's parked there, especially if we have heavy snow, while we have to, we have to plow around and, you know, suck the wing in, and it ends up leaving a big pile of snow around your vehicle, and so it could make it hard to get out. Sometimes we're hauling snow, especially if we haul off the, out of the business area, or if it's a real tight area where there's cars, sometimes they park opposite each other, that makes it very difficult, especially a wing on a truck. At that time, you might, you might call, but more often than not, we don't. I mean, the police will, will patrol in the village too, and they might notice it and either issue a ticket or, you know, on Main Street, is, is the only time we really call, and honestly, if we can, we try to get a hold of the person, you know, if we know who it is before, I'd much rather have somebody come and move it than, most of the time, people don't do it out of malice, they do it, you know, simply if they're ignorant of the law or the reason why we have to be there. So, you know, let no one call the cops every time I make a mistake, so I certainly would want to extend that to other people as well, so.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one thing I wanted to say. Jake did something really, really, really nice for the village this week. We had a, we had a call from Mr. Mrs. Ruff's daughter, she doesn't live here, and she was very nervous about her mother because she wasn't answering the phone, and they were really nervous something was gonna happen or something was wrong, I guess. Mr. Ruff was at a community event or something, and Jake went over there and checked on her and made sure she was okay, so I just wanted to put that, Jake, in your mind.
That's all. For her father.
Yeah.
That was next, I'm sweet, every night.
She was very appreciative, though, and it was just nice that, you know, we're a small village and doing things like that.
We are. That's wonderful.
Yeah.
And in light of that, I believe yesterday, we're National Law Enforcement, and I would give a very big thank you to our Webster Police for all that they do throughout the year and for their support in the village, and so kudos to them for all that they do. Absolutely. They're a fine organization, well-run. Thank you. Regarding sewer, that's the last item on our agenda, all of the information that was asked for by B and L, engineering firm, was sent to them back in December, December tenth, and we have not heard yet, although I have asked for a tentative date to, for the boards to meet, or at least partially to meet to look over what has been determined, and then at that point, there will be a, an announcement of the date for public presentation to both the town and village residents. So we're still up in the air about that. So we're still up in the air about that, we're still waiting to hear from the engineers regarding those dates from the town. Anything else?
I was absent the last couple of board meetings, because I was out on vacation, so I think the board, allowing me to take that time off, and spend it with my families, and the, took my little guy out for a squirrel hunt, and the squirrels, I'm happy to report, are all safe. So we, we did have a good time, it was one of the, one of the things we did.
Should have brought him into my backyard.
I, well, we went out to Williamson, and of course, we can't, can't do it, can't do it here, but they were all safe, they were a little smarter out there, I guess. A little more leery of us.
I think Holly still has her annual squirrel slam.
Yeah.
It's where they, they'll give a prize and pay the winner of the squirrel check, and it's a fire department, it's a fundraiser for the fire department, and all the white cars keep them out there. You know about that, Adam?
I think Batavia does it, too. Yeah, like, there's a lot of towns that do it. It's popular around the country for little towns to do stuff like that. I don't think the bigger cities get away with it anymore. Too many activists, too many, too many PETA people getting out there with billboard and stopping the...
My son Mo's out there, man. He was saying that, they're, they're hungry, I mean, they got piles of squirrels out in front of the fire department.
A lot of those people that do that, too, they actually do use the meat, too. I know some people that avidly eat squirrel, and I find that crazy, but say there's nothing wrong with it if you clean it and prepare it properly.
That's what happens down there.
Yeah, no.
Eating dogs, too, right?
Something with some peas, actually.
Sure.
The duck, the duck guys.
No, no.
Yeah, duck guys.
Cook book, and squirrels are very large.
Yeah.
Although they have much larger squirrels.
They have frogs, but I've never had squirrel legs or, you know.
Chicken.
Buffalo squirrel legs.
All right.
Holly squirrel legs.
All right, well, we'll talk about this a little bit later. It is eight sixteen, and I will maintain a motion, eight fourteen, a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you in two weeks. We will be back here again on the twenty-fourth for our next regularly scheduled board meeting. I guess I should have announced, maybe, we're still on. Initially, at that meeting, we will have a presentation from our village historian, who will bring us up to date on things that have happened in two thousand and eighteen and things that are projected for two thousand and nineteen, so we look forward to that. Have a good night. Thank you. That should be on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Squirrel slam.